Along with Dr. Jarrett Bryant, our superintendent, and Amanda Foster, our executive assistant. So with that, we will look at Board request for information. We're not showing any in the queue, although I have collected a few from Board member questions. And I can, which I will send to you, Amanda, you won't have, you might not have them yet. But RFIs and/or for future discussion, we have several questions on attendance and poverty and as well as ELA growth and poverty. We have a request for an update at some point on middle school sports eligibility. And that's all I have on my list. Does any other Board member have a request for information? Member Donley.
I understand.
How's that? That went off. Okay. I understand the district has a legal opinion regarding the confidentiality of the controversial Concerns Committee process. And I was wondering if we could make that public. I haven't seen it. I'd like to see it. And I think it should be made public.
Thank you, Member Donley.
I'd like to provide an update in Board Connect about that. I would need to consult with our attorneys. We've had, we've had issues in the past where we prematurely release documents they prepare for us, but I can let you know where we're at on Friday.
Okay, that good, Miss, Member Donley?
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Holloman. Do you have a request?
Yes, at the Girdwood Board of Supervisors meeting last night, they asked if it was possible to consider Girdwood as sort of a separate attendance zone during inclement weather or during remote learning days in that the weather in Girdwood can be quite different than the rest of Anchorage as a whole. Most of the staff at the school lives in Girdwood. And they, they did realize that on actual days where they're not instructional, that complicates things as some people work and some people don't. But on days that are remote learning, if it might be possible for them to still use the school building. And I realize that's not a simple yes or no answer. So I'll throw that in the queue for later.
We can provide an update in Board Connect. There are a lot of complexities that we want to spell out for the Board for why a lot of districts tend to not do that. But we'll give you the ASD specific information.
Want to add that Girdwood's special.
Okay, thank you. And thank you, Dr. Bryant. Thank you, Member Holloman. Any others? Not seeing any? We will move to item B, I'm sorry, C, which is the discussion of our ELA curriculum project. Dr. Bryant?
Thank you, Madam President. Good afternoon, Board and ASD community. Recently, the administration shared that it now recommends adopting a new K-3 ELA curriculum. This is partly influenced by the state's ELA grant initiative, which could provide a $3.8 million grant to ASD to select a curriculum from a list of four options that have been vetted by the state. This is part of the larger state strategic plan related to the Alaska Reads Act. While the state's initiative is a really positive thing for school districts, it also means that this is happening very quickly. And we're asking the Board take action on the administration's recommendation next month. So for that reason, we want to brief you on this topic and answer questions you might have. I do want to note an important disclaimer. As I shared last week, we were unable to share the name of the selected curriculum quite yet due to the implications to procurement negotiations. We had hoped we'd be able to share that information today, but we'll need a little bit more time. And we'll share that in advance of any Board action. We appreciate your and the community's patience. So with that said, I will pass it off to my colleagues.
Thank you, Dr. Brian. Thank you, Dr. Bryant and School Board members. So today, we're going to go through kind of what we've done and where we're heading around the ELA curriculum adoption. Of course, this all comes and started with the Alaska Reads Act that you all were had your presentation of during the Board retreat a few weeks ago. And that's mainly to support all students to read at grade level by the end of third grade, and it's the top priority of the Alaska Educational Challenge. So we're going to go through each of these steps here, and the next slide talks about Alaska's Strategic Reading Plan.
Recording in progress.
Thank you. So this is, this demonstrates the Alaska Strategic Reading Plan, and the Alaska Reads Act is embedded in this plan. Go ahead. Within the Alaska Reads Act, we've been attending the implementation webinars. And this, these items, I'm going to let you read through them, but these items have already been discussed within the webinar. Would you? Okay. So the screener tool is, will be the M-Class Amplify. And that is the screener tool that the state will require us to use. And I think you're already aware, but if you're not, we're piloting that screener tool right now at six different schools. In that screener tool, we will be asked to screen our students three times a year and identify students that need support through the MTSS plan.
And just to add on to that, we also, this spring, we'll be using the M-Class for our spring screener. Instead of using Fastbridge, it'll be M-Class this spring.
And then the MTSS plan, we have a pretty robust MTSS plan now, but the state has specific components within the plan that they're requiring us to have. So we're going to look at their requirements and embed it into our current MTSS plan. And then they will ask us to complete an individual reading plan for every student that's not at 40% or above. So they will consider those at-risk students and will be asked to complete an individual reading plan. Within our current MTSS framework, we have what we call a TIF, which is a Targeted Intervention Form for Students. What we're going to do is take our current TIF model and, and then insert the requirements within their individual student plan in our current TIF model. And then they are, have been discussing the progression, non-progression for students that aren't meeting the 40 percentile. And that can happen at any grade level, but definitely there has to be a specific plan for students by the third grade if they're not reading at the 40% or above level. They're also talking about requiring a district reading teacher at every school site, and we're still getting the particulars about that. And then they're going to require a teaching endorsement for any K through third grade teacher and any administrator of a case, of a school that has K through third grade in it for reading. And then also embedded in that plan is that we utilize evidence-based curriculum aligned to the science of reading, which leads us to the next step. But before we go to the next part, I do want to say this is all part of, of what's in their plan that has not been voted on yet. So this is still has to go to the school state board, but we're still monitoring it and preparing ourselves for what's to come.
So if we move to the next slide. So the state invited all districts across the state to participate in a grant process to choose a statewide curriculum. Fifteen districts were accepted into the grant, and Anchorage was one of those fifteen. There's some requirements that the grant outlined. One is we have to choose from the D-approved curriculum. We have to use that M-class screener. We have to purchase the materials this spring in order to implement for all K-3 next school year. And we are looking at a K-3 adoption. Most school districts are doing K-5. We asked for a K-3 because a K-5 at, at the speed is really probably not going to be able to happen. But we do believe that K-3 is very well within our means. Our grant award was $3.8 million. And that was from a set amount per kid across the state, and ours, our amount was 3.8 million. So we went through a committee process. D vetted the curricula based on rigorous curriculum. They actually got it down to seven different curriculum. And then they put up a actual committee to take that seven down to four. And we are, we participated as one of the 15 districts. We had a leadership team that we developed that included teachers, principals, curriculum experts, and district administrators. That leadership team, we had 10 people on that leadership team, five of which were the official members in the, for the decision-making. But all 10 had a part in what we recommended as a district. So that, that group narrowed the curriculums from seven down to four different curriculums. Once it got to four, we stood up a more robust curriculum committee. We added 44 additional members to that curriculum committee. Teachers, instructional coaches, principals, special education staff. We even asked the AEA to give us names, and they actually gave us names specific for this committee. We also had a review from Title VI, Special Education, ELL, and IT. And we had some community input as well for an all-day into the evening session on the February 2nd here at the Ed Center. So this, this committee actually spent a long time throughout the week, and I know many of you came in and looked at the process and looked at some of the curriculum that we were looking at. But they spent an entire week, and the room was just robust with conversation and working through and looking through and really working on the rubrics, through the rubrics. I, I thought it was just amazing to hear all that chatter about teachers being excited about curriculum. That was pretty cool.
So the state recommended a rubric that we utilized, but we made, we went deeper into the rubric that we were going to use. And the tools we examined to create this rubric is listed there, the IMET Reading League, Ed Reports, what the state gave us, and then also the Colorado Department of Education. And finally, we looked at the notes from our previous implementation and made sure that we utilized parts of the rubric that were meaningful to the last implementation.
Or were frustrating for the last implementation as well.
That part's true. And so there were 14 components in the rubric, and then we weighted double the four here. So the foundational skills part, comprehension, fluency, and timing and pacing. So we looked at the timing and pacing for its usability. How, how usable and easily would it be for a teacher to take on a new curriculum and begin in using it for instruction? On the next slide, you'll see that this is a, a part of what our rubric looked like. And so the committee members looked at what are the red flags in this curriculum? And what are the key considerations? And so they, they went through each 14 components and identified those red flags and key considerations. Also, if you'd like a copy of this rubric, I have copies here for you. And then, and so next is, these are the four curriculum that we reviewed. The publishers were open up. I'm sorry. The publishers were EL Education, Putin Miflin, Amplify, and Benchmark Education.
And when we, after they did the rubrics, our A&E department took all of the rubrics and entered them into, into the, into a spreadsheet and figured out what one of the four was kind of the chosen one who had the highest score rating. We also looked at each of them to see where they all laid out. Earlier in a slide, we talked about the actual different found, the weighted components. Before we weighted components, we looked at the results. After we weighted the components, we looked at the results, and the results didn't change. It actually created a bigger divide from the one that we actually selected to the second place curriculum. So, so that kind of helped kind of amplify that we were on the right mark with, with those weighted components. So our next steps. So right now, we're in the middle of procurement, our day widening. And it's over really working, getting with the publisher, trying to get down to an actual agreement. So the negotiations are going right now. We definitely are wanting to give you the name of that, but we just need to wait till that procurement piece is done. So today, we have an on-board action, a non-action item for you to look at. We're anticipating getting the name of that curriculum and the cost estimates or the costing of that into the memo before our next meeting, hopefully next week is what we're hoping for. So that you could have action on the 7th of March. Kind of looking at what are PD components, because we definitely, that's one of the biggest things that we heard about the last time there was a, was an adoption. We're looking at having some kind of trainings during ASDSA in May. We are looking at bringing in the K-3 teachers a couple of days earlier in August, so they can have a couple of days of just intense professional development around the curriculum. And then we're also exploring PLCs at, at the district-wide level as on, for ongoing professional development throughout the next year. So that one, we're still looking at and working on, and hopefully we'll get that information to you soon. So with that, that's what we have. We'd entertain any questions that you would have about this curriculum process and next steps.
Okay. Thank you. Questions? Member Lessons?
Thank you for the update. I, I wanted to share, I guess, a comment and then a question. First of all, I think that I had spent some time looking at the rubric. I think that the questions that we're asking are significantly improved from the questions that were asked during the prior adoption. I mean, we have six, seven years of experience and a whole new set of priorities. And I think that they're deeply aligned with the state's intent in the Alaska Reads Act. I was happy to share a copy of the rubric with some of the legislators I met with, and that was received well to know that we're asking better questions, because I had just gone to look at the materials and packed that with me. One of the questions I have, though, if this is an adoption for all K through three, how are our students at all at the alternative and optional and charter programs? Are they included in that adoption? Or are they excluded? Or is that remaining to be determined? Could you tell us whether they will also be?
Everybody was invited to join in the review, and some of the programs opted out of going through with the adoption, and some did. So for sure, two charters opted in, ANCCS and Roka Shola. And I'm trying to think of which optional programs opted in. They were on the second, they were there looking through the curriculum as well and making decisions on whether or not they wanted to join in with the grant. And so what we told them was, is if they opted in, they had to follow the grant requirements because we're being given a grant. It's not, they, they're not able to take a portion of the curriculum and use it because the grant tells us we have to have full implementation.
So I guess I have a follow-up. Thank you for that detail. I will be, I would be interested in knowing, like a thumbs up, thumbs down from all of our various programs of choice, because we're hearing the word accountability a lot. And I think if there are programs that continue to use curricular materials that involve, rely on queuing, for example, how are we supposed to be accountable for growth when some of those approaches are?
What I can add is, at general leadership this last week, we went through a similar presentation, and we talked to the alternative and optional schools and, and advised them to start following what D does requiring. Because they really haven't set a requirement on charters and alternative schools yet, but we know they will. And so we, we recommend it that they start following along with all the webinars to get that information. Because I, I would, I mean, I can't really speak to what the state's going to do, but we do believe they're going to ask for their teachers to have that reading endorsement as well. And for the principals to also have the endorsement. And so we suggested that they start communicating with them. And, and, and they said they had been tracking it, so.
So do we know what the K-3 endorsement is going to require of, is it six hours, nine hours?
It's going to be a three-credit course, and so they've already contracted with Digital Literacy, so that'll be one-approved course. They're talking about letters, but we're also talking to them about the reading academies that a lot of our K through three teachers went through. They didn't realize that our teachers had gone through those. For those of you that don't know what the reading academies were, that's who, when we contracted with Ashok Consulting. Our teachers went through reading academies, which was training on the science of reading and using those queuing systems. So we're trying to talk to them about, is there a way that we can use that training? So that our chief, right? And principals, there's a lot of principals that went through that training as well.
Other questions? Member Jacobs?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Appreciate the briefing. Thank you, folks. So we have a, an on-action item tonight regarding this curriculum change that doesn't specify which vendor we'll be working with. What's the downside of allowing two full meetings with the vendor to be identified with us voting on this as an action item on our March 20th meeting? What would we lose?
If we have to go to there, we, we may not get materials so that teachers can have them in their hands over the summer. And we'd really like to get those into their hands so that they can actually, because there are many of our teachers that are so dedicated, they're going to go through it and learn it on their own and whatnot. But we, we, we're kind of getting in line, right? When we, when we develop and we get a negotiation done, these curriculums, publishers are having this talk all over the country. And so we're looking at getting in line for our spot, for the materials. And then, of course, here, it takes a lot longer to get them up here. And we are, of course, the biggest district, so it takes a long time to actually, once they get to the to the warehouse, to break them up, put them into trucks and get them actually out to the different schools. It's a, it's a pretty big, pretty big lift for our, for our procurement office and the, and the warehouse. So granted, it's two weeks, but it's kind of a pretty integral two weeks. So that's why we're trying to get this out as soon as we can.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. So I appreciate that. It might be helpful. And I went through the memo. I didn't see something speaking to the urgency. If there's a way that could be added for context and clarity, that might be helpful. The other question I had, if I might, Madam President, is in regards to, I guess, what will we know about what other districts, the, the other 14 that are choosing to pursue new curriculum through this pilot? Which curriculum they're choosing? That might be an interesting data point to know, I guess. Is that something we'll know prior to our first meeting in March?
I think we will. I think we'll know. I think the, I don't think the other districts went through such a robust process as we did. They, they used their original committee members to choose the curriculum. But I don't know that the state has publicized what curriculum they chose yet.
One of the things that we'll be doing next year is all the districts that adopt the specific curriculums will be working together to, to work on the what works, what doesn't work, what can we change, and all that kind of stuff. So it isn't just like an only Anchorage school district.
Yes, go on, Member Higgins.
Thank you. First of all, I liked the process you used. I'll start off with that, very comprehensive and inclusive of a lot of people. I've always had this kind of opposite look at things and say, okay, what's going to go wrong? And with, I mean, you can't have that many people together and reach 100% agreement or somebody raising questions. Any concerns with this that, you know, what's the other side of this coin at all? That makes it more difficult to implement or provide training or services or anything else that we should be aware of? Just, nothing's perfect.
Well, I can say on a positive note, I, we sat in the room with the committee members as they vetted through all the different curriculum. I think using the rubric is what makes it more positive. It, it makes it more objective. And it wasn't of a vote, right? We didn't say, well, we like this curriculum because it's so much more pretty. So I think making it objective helped the committee, such a large committee, really come to a good consensus. I think just with the amount of teachers that we're going to have to train, I think logistically, there's going to be some, some difficulty, some barriers. But I think we can work through those.
I think a lot of people have their hair on the back of their neck just because of the last one.
Yes.
And so we're trying to make sure that we are really working to make sure this is a positive. We've had, I think, every, almost four days, probably about four days a week, there are meetings around this particular curriculum adoption. And, and then there, there's also all the webinars that our team is going to be involved with as well with the state.
Did you have a follow-up?
Yeah, I would just, I agree with you on the previous one. That was the reason why I was asking that question. They felt like they didn't get heard or they weren't participating in it. And that's one of the reasons why I like the approach that you've taken, because the two things we learned with everyday math, when they did an audit of that, and that was not being successful and the public was opposed to it, is one, you need to get buy-in first, and two, you have to invest in the training to help teachers be successful. And I, the approach that you're taking is responsive to that recommendation that we had in 2010, I remember back then. And I just, like I said, that's the reason why I applaud the approach that you're taking. I really do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Let's go with Member Wilson and then Holloman.
I, I wanted to go back to the teaching endorsement, some of the questions that were asked. Is there a plan in place for the training that teachers will receive or need to receive to receive their endorsement? And also, one additional question I'll throw out there is for long-term subs, will they also need to have that endorsement, or will they be exempt?
That's a good question, and, and we were recently asked about the long-term subs, but we don't have an answer for that yet. I do know that the state will give us two years for all our teachers to be trained. And we think, because they haven't really described it fully, we think it's going to look a little bit like the Alaska Studies class that all teachers are required to take to be certified in the state of Alaska. It'll be a three-credit course, and we believe it's going to look similar to that.
And is that at the teacher's cost expense?
Yes. It'll be part of their research.
Okay, right. Member Holloman?
One of the big concerns people had, and I realize we're talking about implementation when we haven't actually chosen the curriculum yet. But the question I've gotten a lot is, do we see latitude in administering this inside the classroom? Where we did not see so much latitude in the previous implementation.
Part of the Reads Act and part of this grant is that we would be teaching it with fidelity.
And can you be a little more specific?
That's a tricky question, Mr. Holloman. I think that we're going to have to have some latitude, right, as we're training teachers on how to use the curriculum. But the requirement will be is that they are using the curriculum. The latitude would come in on, on them learning the curriculum as they go along. But we do know that some teachers don't use our Sengage curriculum at this time, but they will be required to utilize the curriculum chosen.
The follow-up?
Yes.
I mean, I absolutely expect everyone to use the curriculum. The, the question is, will there be a map that maps out every minute of the day like there has been in the past? As opposed to a curriculum that, say, consumes about half a day, but room for teachers to choose a range of activities or things that would follow the curriculum? I mean, wouldn't expect them to go out and pull something from that field. But a, a number of people felt very compelled to not deviate from a very specific script for the entire day.
I think when you're referring to the script, you're referring to the practice sets that are utilized in the classroom. And the whole, the, the, everything that the state is talking about is using, is teaching those foundational skills. So those foundational skills are still going to be key in this curriculum for our kinder first and second graders and, and our third graders. And so the curriculum they vetted through was to make sure those foundational skills were embedded. The difference between what we're looking at now and what we used in the past was that they didn't have those. They had foundational skills embedded, but they weren't real, they weren't real strong. they weren't real strong. So that's why we layered on top of it. We layered those priority plans and the practice sets on top of it so that the kids were getting those foundational skills. This, the curriculum we're looking at has those foundational skills embedded in them. Actually, all seven of them had, that was one of the requirements that the state had. Then they come and some of them have their own queuing systems or different ways of teaching it. But all the curriculum has those science of reading foundational skills embedded in them. And I think when you're talking about when teachers felt like they couldn't deviate from that, they're kind of not going to be able to now either. They, even in the letters training, it's very clear and specific. It's direct instruction. They have, they have to be taught these foundational skills to learn how to read.
One more follow-up?
Okay.
My one. There we go. I, I think we're not quite connecting on the question. I I do understand there's specific skills, specific activities everyone will be asked to do. The question is, will those specific things fill the day? Which is what has happened in the past versus allowing certainly time where people are on a very specific set of instructions, direct instructions, but other time where teachers may have a fair degree of latitude about how they teach those instructional items? Or or is, I'm asking if the whole day is fully planned out, which is what a lot of teachers experienced in the past.
So I, if you're asking me about the minutes required in the curriculum, how many minutes they have to use, they have to teach it?
It would be the number of minutes that are very specific about the activities and the words and the gestures and activities. Does that fill the day?
Each curriculum we looked at, it was about two hours a day of of curriculum. And that's pretty much what we have now in our schedule. It's ninety minutes of reading and thirty minutes of language arts. And this curric, and all the curriculum we looked at is similar. And we asked every publisher, how many minutes does it take to teach a lesson per day? And they said it takes about two hours. Okay.
Member Wilson?
Going back around.
I wanted to address the paraprofessionals. What are, what is the plan for making sure that they have the training when they're working with students as well in the classroom?
As, so we're still developing our professional development plan, but our our goal is to include paraprofessionals because they support us in teaching the win groups or small groups. So our goal is to include them in all the professional development. I don't think we're going to be able to bring them in at the beginning of the year, but we'll have to find some time throughout the year to bring them in.
I'm looking at the reading plan buckets, all the buckets. What will the early literacy piece look like for us?
So that's a voluntary part, the early literacy? So we haven't really been digging into that part. We're looking more at the the requirements that they're they're having us do.
Okay, so the pre-K, the pre-
Early learning and parents and teachers, that's, that's, that's going to be a voluntary.
That's a voluntary bucket of which we don't have in our plan.
Right.
Okay, all right. Other questions? Uh, Member Lessons?
Thanks. One of the things that I I am quite enthusiastic about is the M-Class Amplify screener. And I think I've been delighted about it since I attended a webinar on it a few months ago. One of the things it seems to do quite well is provide information to parents and families in a way that, as a parent, I I haven't ever received. I can get, you know, a range of numbers for my child, but the parent letter home says, these are the skills that your child needs to work on. Here are some ways that you can practice those skills at home. When you shared that will be, that we're piloting right now and that in the spring, the M-Class will be used for the spring screener, will parents begin to see this parent letter coming home at that point in time?
I believe that's-
I guess is that part of the screening adoption?
I'm looking at Ms. Elphits because he's the one that's been working with them last.
He's nodding yes.
It will be available.
It will be available.
Okay. I would be excited to receive that and just understand.
One of the reasons why we decided to do this all this year is so that they don't, our teachers don't have two brand-new things in the, in the vault, a curriculum and a screener, so they can get experience with a screener this spring, moving into the fall. And then we can also look at our spring results compared to our fall results and actually have good data in the fall.
But also with their MTSS plan, they're requiring the three screeners correct and they're giving us deadline dates. And then we have to identify those under forty percentile students and we have to notify parents within fifteen days. So this will give us good practice. We'll have to complete an individual student plan and notify parents within fifteen days of where their students fall. So this will be good practice for us and get prepared for next year.
Other questions? Member Jacobs?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I think Member Wilson and I were having a conversation a couple of weeks ago about how our adoption of this new curriculum might intersect with the potential changes to bell schedules we we may be evaluating at some point. Is is there something we're mapping out to ensure that we're providing each of our teachers and support staff appropriate time for continuing education? Because it is a, we're hearing it's a challenge at some of our campuses.
Oh, this is Eric Bastia, Senior Director for Elementary. One of the things we are recognizing is the need for sustained and ongoing professional development with our teachers. And so we are exploring on the last slide, the district-wide PLC model. Our friends in secondary have been doing a model that has been successful. And at elementary school, we're looking at opportunities how we can build collaboration and teaming time for our elementary staff out of that recognition for many reasons. Due to sub shortages, limited time and resources, just how can we build the capacity of our, how can we invest more in our teaching staff? So that is something that is part of our conversation right now.
So on that, not that slide, I think it was number, oh, well, the grant funding slide. So that that amount is what we get from the state. Are there any other costs that the board might need to be aware of?
Well, so this is how much we get from the state, depends on what our negotiation is, right? When we come back, we'll have that number for you for the second reading, of course. There's some other costs that are involved that we will be looking at, PD costs over the next couple of years. Looking at, but I don't know how many of them or how much we're going to be looking at yet. We're still developing all that stuff.
Okay.
But we're guessing we'll need a little more, but we don't, we think we'll come in close.
Okay. And I guess I'm going back to the teacher, we're, we're asking teachers to implement a new curriculum. They have to be trained by the state. Is there a grant that we could get to offset the costs to the teachers?
We literally haven't spoken about that when Ms. Beltran talked. I hadn't even known that there was a cost, so that's something we're still working on.
So can we at least look at that? I, because I think if, if nothing more, you give them a stipend toward that if we can't pay for the whole thing.
We're hoping, we're hoping that our training that the teachers have had, the majority of our teachers have had.
If the state accepts it.
We're hoping the state will accept that and then maybe we'd be looking at smaller amounts. But yeah, those kind of things are ones that I'd be interested in bringing forward to you.
Other questions, comments? Okay. All right. I think Dr. Bryant, do you have any close, any other comments?
No, that concludes our presentation. Thank you for the great questions. We know that this is a very accelerated timeline and we hope to have the final piece of information, which is which curriculum is it by the next time we meet?
Very good.
Oh, did you have another one? Oh, wait, hold up.
No, this isn't, it's not a, it's not a question, it's not a comment. Um, I spent, it was a recommendation for other board members and community members. I highly recommend a six-part podcast series called Sold a Story. It's produced by American Public Media and I spent some time with it over the past week or so. Really helps us under, helped me understand better how we got to where we are over the past fifty or sixty years of reading instruction in the United States.
Great. Thank you. And thank you guys very much for the presentation. Much appreciated. And with that, we're at the end of our work session unless there, we do have a few minutes for comments. If no more comments, then I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Madam President, I move to adjourn our work session.
Moved in second to adjourn. Any opposition? Seeing none.